Please stand for tonight's prayer. Invocation and fudge are tonight's invocation, be led by Pastor Ken Langley, Christ Community Church Pastor.
All right, let's pray. God our heavenly Father, we read in the Bible that government was your idea. And so I am confident that when we pray for those in leadership in our community, we have your ear, that in fact you are even more interested than we are in good government. And in that confidence, I want to lift up to you these public servants and ask that you would grace them with every virtue they need to lead this community well. Courage of their convictions, flexibility and openness to one another's perspectives, integrity, stamina, these are hard days for leadership in many spheres, and I pray that you would keep them from becoming weary and well doing. I also want to pray for the first responders of this village and ask that your hand of protection would be on them as they seek to serve the community, keep them safe, we ask. And we commit this evening to you, pray that the meeting would further our prayer, that this village prosper, that it be a place of human flourishing, and in part because it has good leadership. Amen.
Amen. At my feet, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the March 1st, 2022 special board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to mayor's report. I need a motion to adopt a resolution stating the intent of the village of Winter Harbor to host a Memorial Day parade and close Sheridan Road in Ninth Street.
So moved.
Second. All right. You want to read the letter?
I do. I have a letter from Virginia Lopez, and it reads, Dear Mayor Bruno and village trustees, For the past 24 years, the village of Winter Harbor, past and present mayors and trustees, along with every village employee, have generously supported the Memorial Day parade honoring our veterans. We would appreciate your continued support for this year. May of 2022 marks the 25th anniversary of the Veterans Memorial and the Memorial Day Parade. With your consent and cooperation, we hope to have a very fun and fabulous parade honoring our veterans. A special dedication ceremony is planned in coordination with the VFW at the Veterans Memorial on Memorial Day after the parade. The Little Fort chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution has sponsored the registration of the Winter Harbor VFW garden grounds as a never forgotten garden and will present the marker. Your beautiful memorial now has international registration with the tomb of the Unknown Soldier in Arlington National Cemetery. This request is made with heartfelt appreciation for the village's unwavering support. Sincerely, Henry Cypolite, Virginia Lopez.
Thank you, Julie. I'd like to say too, that I'm very excited that the Memorial Day parade is coming back. And thanks, thanks to Virginia Lopez and village clerk Julie Rittenhouse for all their hard work putting this parade together in past years and future years. I really look forward to seeing everyone at the parade. So we got motion, second. Roll call please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Second item, I need a motion to approve for Deirdre Collins, Hugh Collins, and Hugh Collins' request for a tobacco and BYOB business license for sophisticated smokes. The current owner will be leaving the state.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Any discussion on that?
All of that, I'll be abstaining on this one. Health Department, the enforcement agency, I have four of us, and had some concerns there, and so I'm out.
Okay. Any other discussion?
It's just basically the same.
It's a new license.
Yeah, but it's, we're going to run the same as everyone else.
Correct. Yes. All right. Roll call please.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. We move on to village administrative report. David.
I'll keep this brief. Just, just an update of the areas that I've been focusing on, still settling in, and appreciate everybody's support. Again, one of the major components here is finance, continuing to provide support to our financial consultant as we continue to update our financial records for this year. We're also simultaneously working on this year's budget with the department heads, and it's a team effort. Another part, another very important part of this team is Julie and Deb, which have been phenomenal in trying to get us acquainted with, with the past practices of the village. We continue to provide, in the absence of a community development director, we continue to provide support to the building department. This team is Kara and myself. We continue to issue building permits with the support of the technical with the larger We continue to conduct meet and greet businesses. Every so often, I go and, and I meet with different businesses, introduce myself, and start getting some feedback on some of the needs of our business community. Today, I had pleasure stopping by sophisticated smokes to meet the, the business owners, so look forward to working with, with the new owners here in the very near future. We continue to also have meetings with the, with the community stakeholders. Last week, the mayor and I met with IDNR and West Truck. The purpose of our meeting was an introduction, but also the purpose of the meeting was to discuss collaboration efforts in order to make the marina successful, and also collaboration efforts of marketing the village jointly. They are a huge draw to the community, and we're going to, we're going to view this as a partnership to benefit not only the residents of the community, but also the businesses. So we're hoping to be able to provide you a vision in the next village board meeting for the following of what, what we're proposing on doing and what benefits this partnership will, will provide us. And also with IDNR, with that meeting with IDNR, and please Chief Campanella, if you want to touch on this, we found a great opportunity for training for fire department when it comes to water rescues. According to, or I'll pass this along to you, if you want to talk about the, the proposed training for your, for your department.
Yes, the gentleman from West Truck offered his connections with the Chicago Fire Department to see how we can coordinate some training out on the lake. You know, their exposure is a lot bigger than ours, and they probably have a lot more expertise than the people we work with and ourselves around here. So that's a, that was a great offer to use those connections to get some better training for our people out on the lake.
The chief, the chief participated in this meeting since, since the fire department is a vital component in public safety for all water activities in and around that marina. So it was, it was important to also know what our challenges are and what our needs are. So it was a very productive meeting. We look forward to a follow up meeting here in the very near future. And lastly, we continue to, to build on our social media presence. Currently, the number isn't spectacular, but in a month, we have 240 followers on the official Village of Winter Harbor Facebook page. So one of the things we're going to continue to do is we're going to continue to advertise not only what's happening in the village, but around the village, and hopefully start transitioning into advertising our businesses as well. So we're going to be also seeking out information from our community partners like the library and high school districts and other school districts to, to really make it the central focal point for our community. And mayor, that's the end.
Great. I'd like to interject on the IDNR, Greg Kelly. Greg Kelly is, you know, I've always wanted to meet him, I saw him on Zoom a while back. But yeah, we're going to have a very good working relationship with IDNR, I'm pretty sure. I mean, he was very open to our ideas, our, what we'd like to, how we'd like to move forward with the marina and with the advertising of restaurants, and, you know, activities that were, we're open to get down there year round, I believe, so. And Mark Stevens, always good to work with, and it was a very positive meeting. I was real fortunate, really happy that everyone's willing to work together, so. But yeah, definitely want to keep those doors open and have that conversation with them. All right. Thank you, Dave. We move on to clerk's correspondence.
I have nothing.
All right. Move on to new business committee reports, administration and community development committee, trustee Hargit.
I make a motion to approve accounts payable warrant 2021-12 in the amount of $241,795.45.
Second. Any discussion on the board? Roll call please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I move to set aside the rules of the president board trustees to waive the first and second reading of ordinance formally adopting the zoning map to the village of Winter Harbor.
Got a second question, any changes on the zoning map?
I don't believe so, this is just a formality of the agreement.
I just know, I, I have one in my office and...
There are, there are actually, there are a couple of changes. And that's why we adopted at this point, we don't adopt if there aren't any changes up, right? This one, there were a couple of annexations and small parts of, of Frank Street that were, so that, that was the principle that was asked.
I want a copy of that. Just, all right, thank you. Roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, and we have the first reading of a resolution expanding chapter 116 of the municipal code of Winter Harbor by adding comprehensive regulations allowing food trucks on a pilot project basis. And I'd ask that it be put on the next agenda for the vote.
Need a second?
Second.
All right. Only my discussion is please, everyone read that ordinance and come back with, you know, ideas and any thoughts and developments.
Well, I do want to highlight some of the changes. So the way that we're presenting this for now as a pilot is a resolution adopting it as a pilot program, opposed to formally adopting the ordinance as permanent ordinance.
A pilot program before one year.
For one year, right. So we would revisit, you know, next fall or winter and say, how did it go? And the majority of activity would happen over the summer. So in the fall or winter to say, how did it go, or the changes we want to make to it before formally adopting the ordinance. But within the pilot ordinance that would kind of govern, the, the main changes here are that we, in how we interpret and iterate food service, right, allowing food trucks, allowing them kind of by right to, to operate. The, we did 75 feet from a brick and mortar restaurant, and you know, that was something the mayor, as we were working on this, you know, really stressed is, we, we want to be able to support our restaurants, I mean, that's one of the things in the IDNR discussion, how do we promote our restaurants? How do we make sure that we're supporting our restaurants? But for me, this one goes to a couple of things. Beyond just the request that we've had food trucks that wanted to come in, right, and going back to, I was trying to look back to, I think it was 2012, the economic development commission, you know, looked and saw, we can get, they call it leakage reports, that shows spending from Winter Harbor residents outside of the village, right, money leaking outside of the village. And, and the number was in the millions of dollars being spent on food outside, right? So we looked at that, said, okay, well, we need to promote our restaurants, and we need to look and say, well, what don't we have that people are, are looking for? And so even then, we surveyed residents to say, what are you, what kind of restaurants are you looking for? And it came back with all sorts of things, but this provides some incremental way of saying, hey, how do we create more options for restaurants, availability in town? And I think one of the other things that we, that we've talked about here a, a number of times, how do we make it easy to do business in Winter Harbor, right? And investment in a brick and mortar, not everyone can do that. And, and so we want to make it easier for people to say, I want to be an entrepreneur in Winter Harbor, and I see the market, and I want to be a part of that. And so this, we recognize the investment that our brick and mortar restaurants make, that's why that's 75 foot, right? We don't want a food truck parked in, right, in front of a, a brick and mortar, want to give some cushion there. The fee is set at $300, which is triple the amount of $100 for a restaurant fee, right? So it's still a reasonable fee, and when we looked, it's comparable to other, what other communities are charging for mobile food vendors, but still recognizes that we, we want to give some preference to the investment that our brick and mortar restaurants made.
The $300 plus sales tax.
And, and sales tax, we, we do direct them, they are to report the sales tags while they're here to the department of revenue. So, and, and there's penalties in there, right, if they find that they're not doing it, and some of that's, that's built in as well. So those are, those are the biggest things there, I think they have to be certified, they have to be health department inspected, approved, right, all, all of those things, but the, the main things are that buffer from a restaurant. And we really don't know what the market is for food trucks, right? And we went back and forth on, I, I think that, you know, based on requests that have come in the past, people wanting to partner with food trucks, it was Harbor Brewing, the tavern, right, saw that interest in wanting to be able to offer food at their establishments. I, I don't know if places will want to just come and ask to park in different parks or parking lots, or, you know, what that demand will be, which is why we set it up as a pilot, to say, let, let's see how this goes, and, and adjust from there, so.
We're not, we're not going to be limiting them, how many tanks they can come, right? Because last year was, you could come twice.
Correct. So no, so the previous, the iterate restaurant license before limits twice, so this is not, there's, there's not a limit on it. It's a $300 annual license.
I did quite a bit of research on neighboring communities, and 300 double what most everybody is.
So there were several licenses, there were 250, Chicago's 500, right, a different market.
Yeah, but we're, we're in nowhere between that.
No, I understand that it's a different market, but there were quite a few at 250, there were some at 500, right, this is, sits right in the middle. And it, to, what it came down to is that the, wanting to recognize the investments that the brick and mortar have made.
Oh yeah, absolutely. I just, I will also recognize that a lot of food truck companies are going to go to Kenosha where there are no fees or no cell at their hands, or they can go down to Waukegan for, again, under half the price. I mean, their markets are way better than ours, they'll make more money at any of the events, what should happen, you have them come here for $300. And is there any way that we could look at an option for residents who live in Winter Harbor to have electric fees, and they're paying taxes in Winter Harbor as well?
I think it's worth discussing, or seeing how the markets go, or what the demand is, is that something we even hear of people coming forward with? We had talked at one point about, you know, if an existing brick and mortar wanted to separately operate a food truck, right, do we waive it in that case? So I, I think that there, we'll see what kind of scenarios come up, and, and what the demand is like, and what kind of feedback we hear. I mean, that's why we wanted to do it as a, as a pilot season.
And I, I believe, in my opinion, for this, you guys finally did your research on it, and finally kind of got it to where it needs to be. With your stipulations and the things you're doing, you're talking about the right people in there, no felons in there selling food, or criminals in there, and you're getting the fees set, you're having it waived from places, you have the first and second reading, which allows brick and mortar companies to come in here at the next meeting and voice their opinion, or other people or other residents who become voice their opinion and say, hey, look, maybe I want to do this, maybe we can have electric fees for residents. But I think it's great that we finally have something, I think you guys hit it on the head here with what we were looking, what, what I, I'm not talking for it, but what I was looking to see, for something like this to be successful and not to make the others mad, so I think that's pretty good.
Have, so towns and cities that have food trucks, have they run into issues with the food trucks not reporting sales tax probably, and are there methods they have for kind of being on top of that and trying to ensure that, or?
Yeah, probably. Yeah.
Yeah, they have run into that, Waukegan in particular have a lot of problems with that.
And did they come up with like ideas on how to kind of monitor that and work and enforce it, or is it kind of one of the things you got to have?
There were a lot of ideas that weren't well executed. But that, you know, you have to understand too, that if you go to a, if you go to an ordinary food truck in most communities, you're paying, they're, they're paying the sales tax to the state. Speaking of which, I'm the former mayor of Waukegan, I must have heard your name. But the, the, Waukegan, when you, when you paid sales tax, there were two sales taxes you're paying. One was, one was the state sales taxes collected through the department of revenue and then repaid it back to the village along with all the other sales taxes we get. But there was also a home rule sales tax, that was one they were adding more products collecting, and that was, that's because the, the itinerary of food vendors that would move through town wouldn't necessarily be coming back for a while, and they wouldn't report all their sales or other factors like that. They weren't coming back, there was no law incentive for them to, so they would fill out a separate tax return and file that along with everything else, and spend, and, and ship off more money to the city. So, you know, you were kind of dealing with apples and oranges. What we're going to see is the regular sales tax that's charged and paid for by, by, to the department of revenue, and whatever, and whatever enforcement and mechanisms they have, they will apply. Most of us pay our taxes. Not everybody does, you know that as well as I do. And that, that's just one of those unfortunate things that the, that there is room for scanning the system that exists out there, but the ones of state, there's nothing further we can do. All we can do is make sure that the, is try to make sure that whatever sales tax they're applying is reported as sales in Winter Harbor, that's where the difference happens.
So is it like itemized on it that we see, like them doing it, so if they were to not pay it, like would we know that they were in there and we didn't get it, or do we not see what the?
Well, it gets, I don't know if it's certified to the state to look at that yet, but there'll be one, the village is allowed one person that can look at that and then report, report back by the department of revenue that, you know, Brad's hot dog stand was here and sold a ton of hot dogs last, you know, two weeks ago, and we, we don't see that they're reporting for revenue here, it looks like they reported it somewhere else.
So it's not a perfect system, but there is something to at least see if they're totally skipping out, you know, we're, we won't, we can't have exact numbers to know, you know, if they're paying actually what it should be, but we can actually see if at least they're paying something. Yeah. Yeah. How soon after?
We would never write a law, that's, that's exclusive for this time.
How soon after the event do you go on that statement and?
There's, there's a lag.
I think it's, I think it's like about a six week lag.
That, that, yeah, I figured it couldn't happen right away, but.
No, it won't happen.
Good to know.
Everything, although it takes a little longer than you might think.
Oh, I know, I know that very well. Okay. Any other discussions on that? Roll call.
No, no, we're, roll call, first reading.
Oh, that's right. All right, you're right, sir.
So we'll just continue the discussion next month.
Continue then, have a vote. All right, thank you, Chris, you have one more.
Yes. Make a motion to approve the request to vacate a village right of way property.
Need a second?
Second.
And discussion?
So the information's in your package adjacent to 1311 East Broadway Avenue, especially.
Now Petrie's here, would you ask what you're going to be doing with it, or it doesn't really matter? What do you need it for?
Well, we maintain that our, 85 feet of our driveway is on that property.
Oh, is it? Oh, coming into your, off the street?
Right.
Okay.
So we've had, you know, the only time the police department's been on our property is over this driveway, and issues have come about there. You know, we have a, we have a limited amount of things that we can do with the driveway now, and we'd like to treat that, that area and that property the same way we treat the rest of our property. The shrubs and the trees grow over the driveway, driveway has to be maintained, so, and like right now, with the village, everything is, is fine, but we need to kind of skip some kind of, you know, something needs to be done for the future, you know, I mean, we need to know. You know, you're, all of you guys may be different in 20 years, we don't plan on moving. So we'd just like to get this situated so that we know what we can do and what we can't do. Tim sent me a letter about different things that had to be removed from the property and, and different shrubbery and stuff that we can't plant, and, you know, we just want to maintain it the same way we do the rest of the property.
Now, most of it's a tree line, it's.
And the tree line for years was maintained by the city.
Right.
But since we've been there, we cut the trees and stuff back, kind of shrubs in the, in the area. So, you know, like right now, I mean, I don't know if that's something that we should be doing. So we're just trying to get clarity on, on the use of the property. We don't want to do anything that we're not supposed to be doing, but, you know, we, we want to maintain it, and that's, this is, that's the main reason that.
So we're asked you are able to get it right away, then you'll be able to do whatever you want to?
Right, it will maintain. I mean, the way it is, if we have to maintain the driveway, I mean, and the driveway needs $20,000 with the repairs, or do we spend 1,500 hours just trying to nickel a diamond up, you know? I mean, this, this will set the precedent, so we'll, we'll do it the right way, so we don't have to worry about something happening later.
Okay. So less to maintain, no staff concerns over this?
Me?
No.
I got one.
In a year.
And it's. And it needs to be clear, so the, the request may be to vacate, but there's no action that you can take on that tonight. In order to do a vacature, we have to have an ordinance, and we need a plat of the proposed vacature. In the past, we've required a $500 contribution for each property that's, that we've ever vacated to, going as far back as I can remember. But one way or another, we need an ordinance, the plat vacature to be approved, so that I can draw up the deed of property to vacature and then report.
So the vote tonight is the principle, to let them know, it, it really directing you to create the ordinance for that?
That's what it would be, yeah.
But to answer your question, no, I, we buzzed up the Lake County bike path, we haven't done anything. Our curve and corner turns there, we have zero interest in it, and I really highly doubt that it'll ever go through.
And there's a pond in there.
13 sort of, if it couldn't, there's a pond in back, there's a culvert that goes into the bike path, and you'd be dead in there right on that property that he has, so you couldn't put a road through there. Or we'd have to build a bridge, that would be an exponential amount of money.
And we would, that's definitely participate in any of the fees that is required.
Okay. Anybody not making a corner and going to your driveway?
All the time.
I've been there once, I can see that.
Yeah, it's, and it would help if we could illuminate it a little more, but again, you know, we have to, you know, we got to make sure that that's something we can do, and I think this will clear that up, you know, we're, you know, the position of our signs and, and, you know, that kind of stuff. But it's, it's, it's basically, you know, we'd like to get the future out of the way, you know, for how many other years? Yeah, I don't have that many years left, but I, I don't plan on going anywhere, so we just pray that you guys help us with that.
All right, thanks, Alan. Okay. Very good. Thank you, Chris, you move on to group want to vote to, to trust law to draft an ordinance? Okay. I guess roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
And Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. We move on to public safety, trustee McCarthy.
I move to set aside the rules of the president board trustees to waive the first and second readings of ordinance 93.01 of the municipal code of Winter Harbor, updating life safety codes to adopt as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Did you have anything, chief?
No, this is the base of fire prevention codes that's required by the state. That's the minimum we can provide, and this is supposed to be done in 2020, in cooperation with BNF, when they were looking over our municipal code, they caught this and said, making that up to date.
Up to date.
Very outdated. So we should probably start buttoning that up, but we'll take slow baby steps getting there. So you can expect to hear more about fire codes and things with the fire department as a formality coming forward.
Okay. Chief. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mirabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore? Aye.
Motion carried.
So attorney long, I have a question. Do we have to take a vote for the shift hour change or is that just a discussion?
Because I understand what they're doing. It's just a discussion, which is that it's happening. This is something that the fire chief is.
That's what I think. So as you can see in your packets, the chief has provided a memo explaining why they're doing the shift hour changes. Are there any questions?
Is that a twelve hours you were talking about?
Yes. Two twelve hour shifts. Currently, we have four shifts in a twenty-four hour period. Very hard to administer.
You should have red, black, green.
So this will clean it up. This is what most fire departments around us actually do. Two twelve hour shifts.
Yeah, so they can do two twelve hour shifts in a week.
I think it's.
To be part of time, you can't do over thirty, right?
So that's evolved too, in light of litigation that's going on. We've learned the maximum hours a fireman can work in a certain period, in a period. And that, this is going to be hard to describe for you guys, but in over a twenty-eight day cycle, they're allowed to work two hundred and twelve hours.
So they're paid monthly, not weekly? Is there that?
Biweekly. So we got to really keep track of their hours.
So this will be easier?
This will help that, yes.
You mean bi-monthly, not bi-weekly?
Bi-monthly, you're correct. Sorry.
That's okay. Okay. Any other questions? Other comments?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the contract for the fire department with Metro Paramedic Services.
Second. Second discussion. Turn that over to the chief.
Yes, so you guys voted on the.
The raise.
The raise last meeting. The actual physical contract itself was in legal review at Metro and didn't get it till sometime. I just got it for you guys to execute it at this meeting.
And you went through the contract, everything looked good?
Yes, and as well as attorney long.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Got a motion, second. Do you have a discussion? Roll call.
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mirabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Lake County Special Enforcement Group.
Second. Second. And discussion in hand.
Chief. So what we're asking is that you allow us to become members with the Lake County Special Enforcement Group, which is a federally funded crime investigative unit run by the Lake County sheriffs. Numerous villages throughout Lake County are members with more joining as we speak. The big draw to this is that it's federally funded. There's no membership dues, as there are in many of our multi-jurisdictional organizations. We have direct connection to all of the federal law enforcement agencies that are members, just not quasi-members that are actually on the team and they do work throughout Lake County. Their focus is criminal investigations to do the things that we need to be able to do, but don't have the staffing nor the money nor the time to accomplish, quite frankly, in many, many situations, because these are long-term, very in-depth investigations, criminal enterprise type things. Thank goodness, we don't have very much of that in the winter department, but there is a few cases here and there that pop up on a very regular basis that we'd like them to look at and help us to try to solve and to eliminate that criminal activity when it does, you know, come within the village's zone limits. The monetary exposure that we have for this is one officer, one day a week. So there is a slight, you know, staffing issue. There is no monetary fee or membership dues that are done. So we thought it was a very attractive way to start to get some of the assistance that we'd all like to see when we're dealing with those type of long-term criminal investigations. Some of the examples that we've had here before is some of the, and that's the other thing, when you talk to about a MEG, and many of you may remember MEG, that was a Lake County initiative under the Illinois State Police. You had to pay an annual fee, you had to have somebody there either part-time, multiple days a week, or full-time. And their focus was on drugs. The special enforcement group does drugs, human trafficking, counterfeits, any of those things and all the above. They're willing to take a part of and have a federal partnership to do those kind of things, should it go beyond the local ordinance, I'm sorry, the local jurisdiction. So we see it as a win-win for our organization and be able to attack, you know, and tackle some of the tougher cases that we face.
And would this be a full-time officer, be part of that or part-time?
We should do either. We plan on doing a full-time officer. Reason being is we'd like that officer to have a long-term relationship with them. One thing they don't want to do is have somebody this week and somebody next week and somebody the week after. They'd like to have a continuous, you know, relationship with that person so they get to know each other and can work really collaboratively when they're out there in the field.
And where do they have to go?
So the headquarters is at Lake County Sheriff's Department on downtown Waukegan. That's typically where they work out of. So his or her duty station that they will be with them and then wherever else they go. The beauty of this is anything that touches our corporate limits in our village boundaries, we have immediate access and know much about it. We've already, just by doing this little meeting and having a little understanding with it, they've worked twice for cases that impact us and very, very professional, very successful operations and we hope to be able to do more of that type of work with them.
Great. Thank you, Chief. All right. Motion, second. Discussion, roll call, please.
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mirabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried.
So the final item I want to bring up for discussion, you've got in there the memo regarding the squad car lease agreement. So these were approved a while back and now we've been told, you know, the cars are ready for delivery, but our financial situation is different than it even was, or at least what we know of it a few months ago. So the village administrator asked, we bring it up, you know, for discussion, have an understanding and then we can decide if we want to take action on it after that. So I want to open up, I'll go to you first, David, to see, you know.
I know Nick's been doing a great job, but we're not there yet, are we?
We're not there yet. One of the things, one of the things that is, we're entering this, the end of this fiscal year, one of the things that we're trying to accomplish is we're trying to accomplish at least making sure that we don't run into a huge deficit. These were commitments that were made back in July. There's been a lot of things that have changed. So my initial recommendation was to hold off on any capital expenditures. Director Sheedy and the chief has, they've done a little bit of research to kind of try to creatively adjust the situation that we have. For this year, I believe that we shouldn't have any capital expenditures to finish off the year, moving forward for next year. They might have came up with a creative situation that we could possibly purchase one car for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So I'll hand it over to them now to explain how the financing or how we can possibly make something like this work.
Thank you, Dave. Yeah, so every three or four days, the monetary issues change and the deal change and that's just working with Ford. Michael did an unbelievably outstanding job working with them. So here's what Ford has, and just to give you a little bit of background, here's what we've come up with that we hope will be a win-win for everybody. So number one, we ordered these cars, they were approved back in July of two thousand and twenty-one, ordered on their own, which was very nice, and then moved that cycle because of some of the COVID issues and some of the manufacturing issues. They moved that twenty-one model cycle and they moved it to the twenty-two production line. So the two vehicles that are at the dealership right now are actually twenty-twos and not twenty-ones and they didn't cost us and had no increase in the funding. So that was very nice of them. The other issue is twenty-twos, twenty-threes and beyond, there's currently a ten thousand dollar surcharge being applied to each one of the vehicles. They also waived both of those and any kind of surcharge for the two current vehicles. So they're still at the twenty twenty-one price and they'll remain that way until we decide yes or no on the vehicles, which of course they want to answer as soon as possible. But they're honoring the original price without any surge charges. Pickup, if we can delay pickup, and we can, according to Ford this morning, they gave it to us last night halfway and then this morning they reconfirmed, that we can delay the purchase and the acquiring of these vehicles in May until after May first of this year, which would be, meaning it would be in the new fiscal year. If you allow us to do that, what will then happen is the first lease payment on those vehicles will not be due until fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, which is May first of two thousand and twenty-three. So there'll be no lease payments on those vehicles in this coming fiscal year. Good so far? Good. Because we went over this about six times because it changed every other hour. The new vehicles that we're talking about, they have a five-year bumper-to-bumper warranty. Everything is covered except of course tires, brakes and gasoline and lube, things like that. I think the brakes are covered also. So we did that, looking at, because of the age of our vehicles and because we've delayed purchasing vehicles for two years now because of budgeting and COVID, quite frankly, all of our vehicles are off the lease and our final payment for any of the vehicles currently in the fleet will be the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, so this new budget, May first, and that amount, that liability for those vehicles is sixteen thousand one seventy-nine oh five. So in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, the only vehicle lease payment that we have is the one that we're already obliged to get, which is the sixteen one seventy-nine oh five. When we do move into twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, the quoted annual payment for the two new vehicles would be twenty-five four sixty-six, which is a significant, almost half of what our annual payment over a five-year period, we typically averaged around fifty-four thousand dollars. But why did that happen? Because we had so many vehicles, we didn't get any for the last two years, so we've been paying off those vehicles as the years go by, hence why we only have the sixteen one seventy-nine oh five to pay in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So with no payments coming this year with the new vehicles, that's, we think we have a win-win situation where it will not affect the coming budget and we might, we could get these vehicles now. The conside of that, if we don't do this and we turn down the vehicles, one or two, the twenty twenty model year or year cycle is already stopped, it's already been closed, that was February eleventh, so we're now into the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four cycle. Again, the current surcharge is ten thousand dollars per vehicle, but they have been as high as twenty-six thousand dollars per vehicle, so that's a problem. So it's unknown at that time. And because we also know that our coming year, fiscal year, with the two new vehicles, we would hope to have a less impact that we've been having with vehicle maintenance and things like that, we actually decreased that budget by six thousand dollars. If we were to keep all of the vehicles and have to maintain all the vehicles at the current rates, because some of them have eighty, ninety and a hundred thousands, all of them, there's a couple in the seventies, you know, we would have to increase our maintenance budget to at least probably thirty thousand dollars, we're estimating, because we're paying four to five thousand dollars a year per vehicle just in maintenance costs because of, because of their age. So I put that before you in the, for your consideration in looking at these bills, we knew that we were trying to minimize or negate any impact on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. And again, by delaying the pickup until after May first of this year, we won't have to pay that twenty-five four sixty-six until twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
My, one question, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Is the postponing until May of twenty twenty-three to pay on it?
Yes, sir.
Is there a cost on that? Is there a cost?
No. And just to clarify the terminology, we use the term lease, it's a tax exempt leasing company of having purchased through. They're actually a purchase, they're not a lease per se. They just call it a lease for our purposes. They provide the option of payment at the time of inception of the contract, or you can defer the payment to the next fiscal year. And we, we defer that.
Is this a lease or a purchase?
Purchase, okay.
It's a leasing company. And then the other thing is that because the way we've done our financing is the outfit of the vehicles and everything is included in the purchasing price.
That was the next question.
Oh, yes, sir.
If we had it within our budget to outfit all the vehicles.
And it's in the purchasing price and won't have to make that payment until twenty-three, twenty-four.
And your budget fully covers that for the next fiscal year?
I'm sorry, sir?
That's coming out of your budget for the next fiscal year, it's totally covered in there and it's not going to be a problem. Your budget's not going to go up because of this?
No.
Right?
Correct.
This year's budget, because there's not going to be any payments this year on those vehicles, it's going to be.
But next year's budget will go up either, or you got it?
Correct. It'll be the following.
It'll be the following year.
It'll be the twenty-three fiscal year.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, so in the twenty-three, twenty-four years.
Yeah, more increase. You'll cover it within your own budget.
Well, within a traditional budget that we've had, because again, we, we're averaging five-year average for vehicle lease purchases has been fifty-four thousand dollars per year. Twenty-three, twenty-four would be twenty-five four sixty-six sixty, so about half of that.
Well, we're just going to, we're going to pinch somewhere else. That's all, I'm trying to make it better for you to make it clear so that there's no issue, you're going to pinch somewhere else to make this happen.
Yeah, no, there's no increase if we maintain our current lease.
All right, is there going to be, are you going to decommission two squad cars or what's the intent?
So the intent right now is Rocky wanted one of the vehicles because he has a need for those vehicles. And then as we look at the use of the different vehicles, we would hope to get rid of one of the oldest and the least, the least mechanically sound vehicles that we have. But, you know, we'd like to give him the best of the two and then decommission the other one.
How much are those games, how much are those games per auction right now at the ballpark?
Ten?
Yeah, maybe ten.
Eight to ten?
This is a two thousand fifteen.
The fifteens are the oldest.
Yeah, the two vehicles, we have two two fifteens, we have a two sixteen, three two seventeens, a couple two eighteens.
And the fifteens are the ones you're getting.
Okay. Yes, sir. So, so why would we have originally been paying for this? Well, originally they would be. So we have the sixteen one seventy-nine oh five left in all those vehicles. This is the final payment in this coming budget year, which is in the budget, because we have to pay that. And then if we pick them up before May first, we would be putting another twenty-five four sixty-six sixty, we'd have to have in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. But by picking the vehicles up after May first, we can defer the cost for a year, which then puts that twenty-five four sixty-six sixty into twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
So putting that off, how does that affect other items in the capital improvement project? We would have to go, as long as everybody understands, that's something that depends of how next year goes. We will have to make, we need to make ends meet, make sure that we don't go into a deficit. We're going to have to make sure that we make cuts somewhere else in order to accomplish that payment. My other concern with this is, and I don't want to minimize the need for these or all the work that you put in, but the need for this, you know, isn't really different than
but the need for this, you know, isn't really different than the other departments and their needs and telling them, you know, like that we're holding off on capital improvements. And I don't think that's fair to do, to say, okay, we're going to make this work. Then everyone, every department can look and say, oh, well, how can I make this work or what can I do? And I feel like that's not the way to operate this either. We're saying, no, you know, we're holding off on the capital improvement projects or we're not. I think we're getting into money territory by, you know, looking for creative ways, that sort of, that's just my first thought.
Mr. Mayor, what do you think?
That's what I would like to hear.
Well, under these, under these circumstances, I, I will put out the, defer it until twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Man.
But when we have no idea what, you know, what the numbers are going to look like, that scares me to.
I mean, we just can't afford to.
And I know it's not a great, it's, it's a, you know, it's a, I'm sorry, it's a shitty situation, but I don't, I don't like, you know.
No, I agree.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I mean, coming in tonight, we thought this was going to affect this year's budget.
Right, but still, right, but that's like, like Trusty Woodmore said, kicking the can down the road. We shouldn't be doing that either. Saying that, that's like saying that we're going to know what the budget's going to look like. A year from now, that's even more up in the air.
When, when can we, when do we have to have a decision on this? Does it have to be tonight?
Not tonight, but Ford's already extended their graciousness, you know, for a number of weeks already. We were supposed to pick these cars up a month ago. And I would just, you know, just to throw in the mix that we don't know what the surge charge will be next year. We know the vehicles have, as you all know, all vehicles have gone up unbelievably. So to get these at the twenty one number, this is going to be the best deal you're going to get for the next two, three years. No doubt about it. And our vehicles, especially the fifteens and getting into the sixteens, again, we're doing four, five thousand dollars. We towed four vehicles in the last three weeks and we don't have a large fleet. You know, we have a very small fleet. So totally understand the situation we're in. We just know that this deal is kind of like the deal of the moment. If we can work around the other issues and try to get something new into the fleet. Because then twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, I'm going to stand in front of you and argue for four vehicles because probably two or three of these won't be running. They'll be behind you, probably going to junkyard. So that's, we're just been, we've been replacing some very major components on some of these vehicles and we don't see any insight for that because they get, they get driven a lot and they're really high mileage. How do you feel about bicycles? Yeah, we, we have some bicycles. The problem is, we only have a finite number of officers who are physically, I'd like to put them out there and do that.
Well, I'm not looking for any workers comp claim.
Yeah, right, you know.
I think, you know, the deal of the moment thing, that, and I get where you're coming from, not trying to minimize that.
No, no.
But that's, it's the same argument that can be made, you know, for all the capital projects. They come like, if, if we're going to get a better deal now than we are waiting, right? So I, I don't, I, I struggle with that situation. So me personally, I, I would like to know more on the numbers, you know, find out what we're going to find out, you know, from the work Nick's doing before making the decision on it.
Yeah, if, if you got a report, Nick's trying to give us a rundown of what he's done and where he's going and he's working very hard to get to that point. Two, you need to understand, the budget numbers that we have for that budget number doesn't necessarily mean you have that money in the budget because our revenues fluctuate. And so when they fluctuate, if the revenues go down, then the budget number should go down at the same time. They go up, they go up to whatever the budget number was there for. So it's, it's a catch twenty-two type of a situation that we have. But I would like to know a little bit more where Nick is at with what we've got. He's, he's got a pretty good handle on what he does and I think financially we need to see where that is because we have to be prudent in what we do.
And that was my point, asking if, if we're willing to stick our necks out for them and they're willing to stick their necks out for us and make it happen as they have to, if they can cut it off. That's, that was the whole point of my comment. It wasn't to demean them or anything like that. I was saying, hey, this board's willing to stick their neck out for them to do what they want to do. If we have to take some concessions at that next budget, they're going to have to do it. They're going to have to dig deep and do it. That, that was the whole point of that message I was giving. And I'm not making light of them, just saying that we're going to do this and we got to be able to give back if it comes and we're, to that point we have the money, we're going to have to try cutting stuff. And I know it stinks, but that's, that's what we're left.
Would it, would it be tough if we could table this until the next board meeting?
That's not a hard decision.
Is that, can we?
It's four days.
Do we have that kind of time?
I, yeah, we can correct.
I mean, we, they said we could pick them up after May first. I don't think it's an issue for them moving the cars onto another buyer.
Oh, is there one?
There are plenty of people who need those. So I, I think they would work with us through the next booking. We would all do.
Okay.
So we'll revisit this in a month. Hopefully we'll have an answer. I'm sure Nick will have an answer for us.
Anything else, Dana?
Oh, no.
Okay. So we move on to the next item, public works and recreation. Trusty Mayor, what?
I'd like to make a most preferred approval for the lowest responsible bidder for the two thousand twenty-two street rehabilitation project.
So, any discussion on that?
Just, just, we've been using them for the last.
Just for our streets.
Four years now. Ted's comfortable with them. I'm comfortable with the work they do. They do really good work. They get it done fast. They usually are right on time. It's what they tell us they're doing. They've been good.
And they actually did a little extra for us last year.
Yeah.
They do extra. We paid for it.
Yeah.
We paid for it. There, there was no freebie. But yes, we, we, we were able to work the numbers and, and get the quantities to where this favor us. Absolutely. This is base two of our three-year project.
What's the Thompson and Roberts?
This is going to go from Seventh Street to Fourth Street on Thompson.
Thompson.
And Roberts Road from Ninth Street to France Court.
France Court.
This year's project different than last year's. There's no concrete work, so that obviously slows things down. Storm sewer work, that slows things down because it's a different contractor. So actual working days is going to be probably less than two weeks. So we'll probably have this project completed by June first. You know, probably middle of May.
Weather permitting.
So yeah, this is going to be a fast project, quick project. We'll get in. At two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, they were about seventy thousand dollars less than the highest bidder. So it's a good project how the engineering was done. So we afforded this project.
This is the same company we had last?
This is actually the same company we've used the last four years.
Four years?
Like won the bid, yeah. Chicago Land has, has won the bid the last four years. That we bid projects up, those are the years that we didn't do any work.
Next, Tim.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments? All right, roll off.
Hargit?
Aye.
Lavind?
Aye.
Mirabella?
Aye.
Karthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Woodmore?
Aye.
Washington Kerry? Do you have something, presentation you want to?
Yeah. Um, we've moved along, I'll come up here. We've moved along with the water sewer master plan. So we, we have some information that I thought would be good to share with the board. Did you say beep? Where's your password? Come on, tell us all.
He knows my password.
So we got the rough draft back. This has been a long time coming. We're, I'm excited about it. I, I, I'm excited. Are we going to see it on the wall or no?
At Ensign.
Oh, I can draw pictures. But honestly, over the last two years or three years that we've been talking about this and since we're, we're missing a community development director, the TIP portion of the water sewer master plan has also come to me. So instead of two of us giving a presentation on this, it'll be just me. And I'm going to do this really kind of fast. I'll be respectful of your time. But I did want to get a bunch of numbers in here. The numbers always look worse than what it is. So please don't take this as a discouragement. I know we were just talking about budgets and how crazy. And the other thing is, is I don't have the same characters that Bob used last month.
Yeah.
I'm just not that good. But what do we, what do we do this plan for? We did it to find out the existing condition of our infrastructure systems, all of them, water, sanitary and storm. Assessment, assess the needs of it, the operation of it and the maintenance procedures of what we do. Give us some maintenance recommendations. Look into capital improvement project recommendations and then obviously just the asset management needs. All of these things incorporated, take labor and money. Two things that we're short on, just to start off.
Does the, it's only looking at existing infrastructure or is it also identifying gaps of, here's where you don't have sewer, here's where you don't have storm water?
It does look at gaps. So we won't get into that tonight, but when you get the copy of this, it'll tell you, you know, over on Thompson Avenue or out on Roberts Road, you know, you really should loop your water system to get better water quality and to kind of keep it fresh, dead end water supply. While getting water down to one-on-one Sherden, if we're going to talk about the TIP district, getting water and sewer down there, what's that going to take? You know, and so it does absolutely talk about it in here. We just won't get into it. We'll touch on the top of it tonight. But what we know today is that our water system, majority of the pipes are six inches and they look like those pictures there. About five or nine point eight miles of it is asbestos cement, transite pipe. So out of thirty-six miles, we got ten miles of asbestos pipe. Still in the ground, no different than any other community. This is, but it's not good. It, it does need to be changed. Sanitary system, the majority of our pipes are eight inches in town and about eighty percent of them are clay pipes. Biggest issue with clay pipes, if they've been in the ground so long is they have a valve where they come together and they set the one in the ground and they push the other one up against it. Over the years, ground movement, it separates. So that's where you get the root infiltration, that's where you get the block. Same thing happens on your own service into your house. That's why tree roots are the worst thing for sanitary pipes. Storm collection, most of our storm pipes are on the east side of town, sixty, seventy years old. It actually works great on the east side of town. We don't have many flooding problems. What we have is, is obviously close to the lake, the water table is off the highs. We have a lot of sun pumps that will just run constantly. And you'll see them either go into the storm sewer or they'll go into the street. We maintain over seven hundred different types of structures, whether it be a manhole, a catch basin, whatever it might be, we maintain seven hundred different types of structures for our storm system alone. This whole process and reading through this was, was very interesting. They're going to provide us data review and collection, mapping updates, recommendations and cost, capital improvement costs, which will include our gaps that Trusty Hargit was talking about, TIP district recommendations and then just the bipartisan infrastructure law that we all hope will provide us the millions and millions of dollars that we want to use. To get into the numbers, just general public works information that's needed is obviously the GIS system. Everything runs off of GIA, I guess nowadays. Paper, you go back ten, fifteen, twenty years, public works departments and even communities real close to this one, didn't keep a lot of records, didn't keep a lot of data collection. So when you say, hey, you know, when was this house, where's the B-box on this house? There's some houses in town, we have no clue. There's some houses in town that we absolutely know they're buried under Sherden Road, but we couldn't tell you where. So GIS, that helps. But its initial cost of sixteen thousand dollars and then an annual update. Asset management software, something to put all this in. It's a big cost upfront of thirty thousand dollars, but it's only two thousand dollars in your annual budget. A water rate study, you know, they threw that in there for, I think it's three years down the line. Zion just completed one. They spent about twenty-five thousand dollars on their water rate study to find out what should they be charging with the age of their system versus what it costs to operate it. For the water system, big things that came out of it was fix high priority valves and vaults. Obviously there's, there's issues out there. You know, exercising vaults that we talked in the vision meeting didn't happen in this industry years ago. Now we found out that over the last twenty years, we figured out that it does work better when you move them every year. So they'll put it in there and they have a thing in there to fix them, get ten a year in, in the first four years and then set up a thirty-five year replacement valve. We just replaced three or four last year that just won't work. And then you go to move them and all of a sudden a nut pops off and, and you got a big problem. Water main condition assessment, they're saying five percent per year. That's their recommendation. And that's to actually go in and do an in-depth thing, not just a quick, you know, look at it, find out when it was put in, what material it is, actually go in and find out, does it look like that picture we saw earlier? Replacing water mains, they recommend to replace or rehab, rehab meaning maybe wine, like you do a sanitary main. You put a material in it, expands, gets hard and now you've saved your, your water main instead of digging up the road and, and replace it. But they're asking just over a half mile per year. That'd cost a one point four million dollars to do a half a mile.
Half a mile?
Half a mile. That's what you're going to get for a half a mile. So, and you've got police cars are expensive. Replacing hydrants, we started this a couple of years ago. We talked about in our capital improvement plan when we started it. We jumped on it. We got eight of them in. We still have some that are obviously over a hundred years old that we bought from the state of Chicago. When our water system went in, right around the forties and fifties. But we got to get on it. We have some that they just don't make parts for and Rocky and his great working crew would be upset if they went to a hydrant and it didn't work. So we try to work with them. Got to be very, very gentle with our water system, especially the hydrants. We've talked about this with the young kids on his department or my department. You know, you get some.
Turn them, shut them off.
Going too fast and turning them off is not good. You know, I'm sure you have the same problem as I am. The sanitary system, cammering, to actually be able to see what we have, they're saying five percent a year, costs about twenty thousand dollars a year. Purchased a remote camera for thirty-six thousand dollars. This is what was in the budget last year through the IPRF fund or the IPRF grant that Bob so graciously took away from me. So that's still out there. No, honestly, that, that's through the IPRF. We changed the travelers, right? Is that whatever?
We changed.
We changed the travelers, so obviously we lost that grant money. So we have to find a way to fund that again. So it's just, it, it really is just no different than anything else, trying to get a police car, trying to get anything. But we're still in the market for a, a camera to be able to go in and do that seven thousand linear feet per year.
What if we borrow one now, right?
We do a couple of different things. We either rent them or a lot of times we call Pleasant Prairie and bring their CCTV trucks down. But obviously we can't do that all the time because they're cammering their own stuff. But we have used it and, and our partners locally have been very generous. We all help each other, whether it's parts or cammering something. But this is something absolutely we can do and cut that twenty thousand dollar cost if we have a camera. Nowadays, it's nice because it will be recorded onto a thumb drive, put into, what do you call it? A server? Is that where you're going to store it? It's in the cloud. It's in the cloud. There you go. That's a good spot for it. Mainline repairs, three-point repairs, depending on our depth. Obviously we all know about Eleventh Street, that's twenty-five feet down. That's going to be higher than thirty-five thousand, but it's a good average cost to start setting it up. And once we get the book to you and the final draft to you, when they say initial cost, that's the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And then it goes ten years out from there. So what we'll see is a ten-year idea or recommendation. Obviously, just like our capital improvement plan we did, you know, we, nobody saw COVID coming, so we had to adjust. This is not going to be any different, but it's a great place to start. Replacing manholes three per year, condition assessment of all of our manholes. We have a lot of them that were built with brick and they're literally falling apart. There's no troughs in the bottom of them, so when the solids and waste go running through and they hit that, it stops. Builds up, dries out. That's where you get a, a lot of manhole sanitary issues in our main lines is because they're so old, there's nothing there to keep everything moving. So they're talking about ten thousand dollars a year to get twenty-five percent done, starting, it said year two, so I think it was twenty-four, twenty-five. Lift station, we have one lift station in town and it's out in the park. That's where we run into problems when the Schleter building backs up. Their bathrooms will start backing up and it's because our lift station, something happened. Who knows what it is? And it's all the way over by the bike path that heads over to Thompson. So when they put in that, instead of coming out to Ninth Street or, they went across the park and that was the line, if you remember in the vision meeting, all the sanitary lines that were in that picture, that's where it was headed, it was headed over to the bike path.
And where the bike path is where it goes to Thompson?
Right, where the water, the fire department's water barrel thing is. That's where, that's where our lift station is at. And that's where their sanitary, sanitary goes and it goes under the bike path that heads into Thompson. So it's a long run for that, which is why they have that and a lot of other things. Infiltration, condition and assessment, again, trying to do five percent a year. Infiltration, condition and assessment, again, trying to do five percent a year, initial cost of thirty, aiming cost of fifty, in trying to continue to assess where we're at. Obviously, you want that baseline for all three of your your utilities, but then you have to have somewhere to put that data, keep it updated, and keep going. So obviously, we're we're adding up numbers awfully quick. The storm, the Village Park storm line that it talks about here, thirty thousand dollars, million dollars over two years, so you're talking about a two million dollar job. That is the Cabin Avenue flooding that we have and those really heavy rains we had in nineteen, eighteen and nineteen. Nineteen was worse where it literally went from this street all the way to Seventh Street and into the park. If you remember, the park's pond, that's there to take that overflow. Once that fills up, there's the overflow pipe there that everything is supposed to drain down Cabin all the way down to the main. Well, when everything's flooding and everything's backing up, those people on Cabin, it's gone all the way up to their houses at the door. So we wanted to look at this. This was another master plan project that we wanted Baxter and Woodman to look into pre-COVID, so we tried to get them to throw this in here. So that's a big project. The storm line that they're talking about that's in the park, that was actually installed using volunteers, public works, anybody who had a shovel, and they just laid a whole pipe in it. It's not the right pipe that people use today, but it's what they had, it's what they could afford, and it's what they got accomplished back then. No fault to them. It worked. It's worked for a long, many years. Now it's just time to get it changed. Outfall inspections and mainline inspections and repairs, we have a lot of these. Same thing, you drive down the road, you see a manhole sitting up three or four inches. Those are some of the issues that we have to do. Some of the catch basins are broke. You know, you see that all over. So we want to do a model and the repairs and try to get those things on a routine of when we get out and do it. Now, everything we do is reactive instead of proactive, with the exception of outfall, we're still kind of reactive. But we're required by the EPA to go out and inspect every single outfall that we have every year. We don't have the manpower to do it, so that has been one of the things that has stayed almost consistent. We've kept them off our back, but it's something we really have to do because we don't want people putting in oils and stuff like that into the storm because it obviously all goes down to the lake. It does not get treated. So what are we talking about? The general cost, water, sanitary, storm, one point eight million dollars. Annual cost of one point seven million dollars and a twenty-one million dollar investment over ten years. Again, don't freak out. The bipartisan bill, the US EPA, the US USDA, there are funding opportunities out there that we want to take advantage of to help reduce any portion. We did it with the roads where seventy thousand dollars out of three quarters of a million dollars was what we had to invest and we got roads done through the LPA fund. That's what we're looking for. So out of twenty-one million dollars, they're not necessarily, grants aren't going to cover everything, just like Nick said last month. It's just not going to happen. If we're going to wait for grants, we're going to wait forever. But there are opportunities for less than one percent interest in EPA loans and stuff like that. So that's what we're going to continue to look for. And now that we have this this master plan done, when this bipartisan bill comes up and they say, all right, you have a shovel ready project, we are absolutely ready. And we can provide something immediately to say, these are our needs.
Don't let that number scare you because when I first started here, not to pick on the police again, but I'm going to go through it, because I lost my big heart when I started. Their budget over ten years wouldn't be close to that. I'm talking from two thousand nine to what it was. So that number is not far-fetched because it's not twenty. So eleven years ago, that, I bet if you look up the police budget, I bet you that number hits right on right on mark for the ten years. So if you look at it in apples and oranges, you think you're infrastrivers. And I get it, they're important too, but that's not a very far-off number and it's ten years later.
And anything we get into with sanitary, always keep in the back of your mind, sanitary lines run down the middle of the street. So wherever we replace sanitary lines, we get a new road with it. Water, fifty-fifty, a lot of times it's on the side. But to go with this, to go with the investments of capital projects is the labor hours and the maintenance. Just throwing out there for the water and sanitary is over twelve hundred labor hours of work that needs to be done every single year. So when we get down to finishing this report, not only is it just the the cost investment, it's the labor investment to to do it. And there's some stuff on there, but it's not even worth, the best one was the twenty thousand dollars for camera. That's the best I can come up with to show a decent number of stuff that we can do, you know. I mean, we can set it up, but it's going to take time. You know, it's a camera, all of it. We have to clean all of it. So the ideal thing is to inspect the catch basins or inspect the manholes, clean them, so you're going six hundred feet to the next manhole, and then put the camera in right behind it and check the condition of it. Clean it all up, check the condition of it. So the labor hours that it takes to go through and do that, you know, it adds up as well. So it's just something we have to think about. To talk about the Tiff district, and I'll try to finish this up really quick, the Tiff district, the good thing about this is is they can pay for itself. The money can come back. But what we need to know from the very beginning is our water system will not, absolutely will not support any redevelopment on Sheridan Road. It will not do it without an upgrade. All of our mains are six-inch cast iron on Sheridan Road and look like that picture in the very beginning. So we keep that in mind. The good part about this is most of it's in the Tiff district, if not all of it. So we'll get that back and that should be part of the construction, any development that we do. And we can talk about another car wash, another restaurant. Whatever business you have in your mind, most of it, we're talking about going to an eight-inch water main. Eight-inch PVC will be eight-inch PVC in fifty years.
So is that something that you would plan to do that before bringing businesses or as they come in as piece meal with that?
Well, obviously, anytime we can do it, we want to do as much as we possibly can at one time. Obviously, rates are cheaper. If you do point seven miles, it's going to be one point one million dollars for that half a mile. But if we do a couple of miles, you know, we're talking about, and I'll just use the Plaza, you know, Twelfth Street. We do that one section, you know, increase that because there's going to be a water park put in there on the second floor. You know, large water user, you're going to have to increase it. So a lot of, a lot of this is increasing it to an eight-inch main. If we get a water park, let's say we tear this building down and put a water park here, you know, an eight-inch main's not going to cover it. So anytime there's work, that can be part of the engineering. Will, whatever you're asking this to come in, will our utilities support it?
The the four point nine is in addition to the number on the previous slide or doesn't murder that number?
In addition. In addition, we tried to separate Sheridan Road. Unfortunately, Sheridan Road obviously was built first along with the east side, so it's the oldest that we have. But just to extend it down to one-on-one Sheridan, which we we want to do because we're trying to really market that property, we're talking half million dollars. But I also think now that we have numbers and we have data and we have information to provide any developer that comes in is a whole lot better than saying, I don't know. So I believe in my heart that having these numbers is going to help market up and down Sheridan Road a hundred percent better than what we have. I think upsizing and extending the share, extending all the way down, two-one-one is really going to help in every aspect. One of the biggest issues we have in town is from Seventh Street to Ninth Street, we have no sanitary main on Sheridan Road. It's either in the alley behind the east side or it's on Whitney. That doesn't help attract any business. It doesn't help the business that are here in town. So those are the gaps that we want to talk about filling from Third to First Street, from Seventh to Ninth. There's a lot of, a lot of things we can do there.
You got to cut the previous slide, right?
For sure.
Real quick, and what's the difference between replacing and upsizing?
Replacing, we'll replace with an eight. So if we talk about replacing, we're going to go from a six to an eight. Upsizing means that there's a large water user, we're going to put a car wash it there, we're going to want to go from a six to a ten or a twelve. You're going to be a lot more. So upsizing is that.
So the one point two is just the difference in cost from the existing size to the new size?
Correct. Correct.
So the work in the Tiff district needs to be done either way, right? The infrastructure. So is it worth considering prioritizing that work before people are coming in, looking at, developing it, rather than waiting and having it possibly like eat into what?
No, I don't. We shouldn't wait. I I don't. Just like when the Plaza was redone from from the old way in the silver dollar counter lane in the grocery store, when he went in and did all that, you know, we accomplished all that with a six-inch water main. You know, I think we could have done it a little easier, but we accomplished all that with that six-inch water main. I do believe if we had gotten any more large water users in there besides the laundry man, we would have had to upsize it.
But what I'm saying is, is it something that we look at doing sooner rather than waiting for developers coming in because the sooner you do it, then, you know, rather than push it, and then you're limited on what other things you can fund with it. You know, you're limited to what you have in the the Tiff money at that time. So, you know, we prioritize this over other things too while we're waiting and then making sure-
Same reason you want to, we want to get all that stuff in one-on-one Sheridan through the market better.
Absolutely.
I mean, so is that getting factored in sort of into our Tiff planning as far as what the long-term plans are?
Yes. So as we go through, obviously, do we need to wait? No, I don't think so. I think we can keep going the same speed we've been going. Anytime we can get any of this work done, we are twenty, thirty, or forty years behind anyway, you know? So anytime that we can get done, we find funding to do it and we prioritize, you know, and I'll just use ARBA funds, you know? What are we going to do with this? Does utilities and infrastructure qualify? Well, then at least it's on the table to have that discussion. Is that what we use it for? I'm not sure. You know, is it the best use of ARBA funds to use it for that? That I'm not sure. But at least it's there to have a conversation. Right now, we cannot even have a conversation.
In this case, especially when it has to be done either way, now or later, then you might as well do it, and that's what the money is there for. That's different than the capital improvement.
But I wouldn't slow down anything because if you're going to-
Right, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying that should we, should we be prioritizing it now rather than wait and then, like I said, then you've got to decide, you know, how much of the-
We should, we should prioritize because as as the vision that you guys have proved, we're looking at Sheridan Road to redevelop Sheridan Road so we can sustain or build operations with sales tax that that's generated from that quarter. So as we, as we move forward and to increase revenues to village, as we look forward to funding opportunities, it should be one of our main focuses is to make sure that we prepare ourselves for any redevelopment.
Right. And honestly, we've had this conversation through the vision meetings, through the comprehensive plan. You know, we knew this was it. Now we just have it a black and white and it's proved it. You know, I've always known that it's a six-inch water main on Sheridan Road. Cast iron, put in fifty years ago, sixty, seventy years ago, I'm sure it's corroded on the inside. But what we can keep doing is obviously always prioritizing that. But I wouldn't stop somebody from, you know, the tavern wants to rebuild or timeout cells or the lighthouse goes or whoever, it could be this building, tear this building down and build a water park here. I wouldn't slow anything down, but I also know that we have the information here that's going to help us prioritize that development.
Tim?
Sir?
Water pipes are under Sheridan Road, right?
Yes.
Okay. Willmett went through an extensive renovation with Sheridan Road where the state, they did the Sheridan Road where the state did Sheridan Road, but anything underneath Sheridan Road, Willmett took on. They put in a ten-inch on there because of the high-rise buildings and everything that they had. They used expensive water. And so what happened was the state did the Sheridan Road project and Willmett then got to own that section of Sheridan Road to take care of it. That's what could have happened had we had the revenue when they did Sheridan Road here.
Last year you're talking about?
Well, this is, this is, this is what Willmett did in about ten years ago.
Right. But what you're saying is what we could have done, we-
Well, see, when they do Sheridan Road, sometimes we will probably get the option, do you want to own Sheridan Road and you want to take care of it? Once we renovate Sheridan Road, the top portion of it, you know, we'll do it to specifications, but when we dig it up, do you want to do your infrastructure then? Why Sheridan Road's dug up?
Right.
And that's what Willmett did.
Right. And we'll run into that in about fifteen years.
Yeah.
Because this project they just did last year, that's what I was talking to Dave about today, they weren't letting anybody do any. I want to find RV boxes on Sheridan Road and I'd have said, you're not touching it. We're going to scrape off our inch and a half and we're going to replace it with an inch and a half, you know? Because they were on time scheduled. They had a certain budget that it was just a repaid project. It wasn't a rebuild project. So once we get to that rebuild project, absolutely, you know, and obviously this is an issue when they widen Sheridan Road from a three-lane highway to a five-lane highway, you know, we we lost some of our infrastructure. But if we ever want to buy it, absolutely, you know? I know they were more interested in that when we talked about the road diet, you know, into the the road study.
If we can stage, if we can stage it that way, it'd be great if we had the revenue to do it because they would rip up the road and then we can get into the infrastructure and then they put it back together again, but then we would own Sheridan Road and we would take care of it.
And you're not going to take care of some traffic light and all that. No, you're talking, you're opening a can of worms.
You're a really-
We don't want to take Sheridan Road over to the state at all. I don't. When I lived in Barbara, that'd be so tough. Yeah. Two traffic lights and all and all the and all the lights that go on there. Come on. Hey, you're opening up a can of worms.
Anything else? Any other questions? Obviously, this is just a quick, it took longer than I wanted to, but it was just a quick overview. We'll have the draft in about a month, so hopefully, or the final, hopefully in a month, so at at the April meeting. I'm really excited to be able to at least have this in your hands, to read it, throw it away, do what you want with it, but at least I want to get it to you because there is some some interesting details in here that I believe some of you, if not all of you, would be interested in reading, you know? I was going to give you the draft.
Oh, my gosh.
There's mistakes in here I don't really want to get out. But this is a good thing that I'm glad we invested in doing this master plan, especially not only just for the village as a whole, but even as a Tiff district. You know, because as we go forward in marketing and developing, you know, this is this is something we can really take advantage of.
When you send us the final version, can you also resend the road study just to be able to have the numbers kind of in context at the same time?
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's two thousand eighteen.
Right.
You know, we're due for a new one during COVID. Same thing with like a leak detection or a fire hydrant inspection. But, you know, one of these years, we've we've got to keep that in mind that we should update that because obviously things have changed since two thousand eighteen. But absolutely, because that's what I do, is I like to look at those numbers next to each other. So again, if anything comes up, just reach out.
This is a great useful tool as we prioritize our stuff in our investment.
So Tom, next title. Over comments. You'd like to address the board, we just asked you to provide us your name and your address. All right. We move on to unfinished business. I'll start down with Trusty Woodman.
Yeah. So at the next month, we do have our Easter egg hunt on Thursday the fourteenth. We are going to have our team flashlight going with our Easter egg hunt. We are going to have our team flashlight glow-in-the-dark Easter egg hunt. And then on the 16th in the morning at 9 o'clock, we'll have our regular Easter egg hunt. Followed later in the day by a Easter parade. That was an idea by David. And then obviously our lunch with the Easter Bunny. So definitely check out the Facebook page for more details. And then last week, I had the opportunity to speak with George Foster. I'm just talking about some things going on in the village, but I'll just kind of repeat myself here just because I think it bears repeating. Obviously, no one wants our taxes to increase, but as we've seen today, we don't have funding for a lot of things that we absolutely need. You know, and I, I think people see that they don't want to have to fund more money, but they could donate if they wanted to. Even as I stated with George Foster, even if it's $25. I mean, if you want to donate that to like your parking lot department and several other departments here, I don't think it would, not any small, large, medium donation. 22 million would be great. But yeah, I mean, I, I think people see small donations as it's not worth giving or it's embarrassing to just give a small amount. Even the smallest amount would go such a long way, especially with some of the smaller departments. So definitely, whoever in the spirit of giving, will let me take it.
Thank you, trustee Whitmore. Trustee McCarthy.
Just thank you to Tim for the presentation information event.
That's it. Thank you. Trustee Hart.
I have nothing.
What? Trustee White. And that's a first. Trustee White.
I want to talk for a bit.
You're good too? Trustee Levin. Trustee Mayor Hall.
So this is how the department, I've been going to some meetings with them, obviously, now that they're like the manager. They're looking for volunteers, so if anybody knows anybody, just saying people. It's been working pretty hard and they do a lot. And people, there's people, I don't do Facebook, but I hear it. People are complaining about their homes, but people should get more involved instead of complaining, that's all. Try to get more involved. As for the public works, we're still a man down. We're trying to do patch areas if it's nice. And I know he's going to be out cleaning the store drains and that kind of stuff as weather prevents because it is getting nicer, salt's going to run off. That's it.
Okay, thank you. A couple of things I put under merit report, but the village newsletter is going to be coming out, April, May, and June. If any board member would like anything in the upcoming newsletter, please let village administrator Dave know. And we are hoping to have this out in early April. Actually, not hoping, I want it out early April. Because January, February, March didn't get out till the end of January. But that was because you didn't have department heads getting you the information on a timely manner. But I'd like that to be the case this time. So I, I've also asked Dave to start a survey about having an electronic newsletter in the future. So if something will be in the newsletter to get feedback from the residents, we feel this will reach more of our residents and businesses. So just watch for that.
So I mean, it is available electronically today. Is there anything different?
It's going to be truly electronic. We just want to see what the feedback gets from residents and businesses. If they prefer a mailed one, would they be okay with the electronic? It'll save us money, but I, I don't know. I've talked to a few people, they like the mailed one, but you know, let's see how it goes with the service. I also got a letter here from Scoutmaster 2663. I'd like to recognize trustee Levin as far as work with the Boy Scouts. Trustee Levin made a presentation to 2663 about all the areas of local government. We all appreciate your great representation of our village government. I used to do that with Boy Scouts. He's actually a citizen in the community on their badge. I'm glad they're asking you and not me. But thank you for that. I want to also recognize all the members of the West Department, Public Works Department. Winter is over, no, I'm, I'm further many. Two of our streets were passable and safe throughout this winter season. Guys did an outstanding job. As I've said before, I drive from here to Waukegan and you can absolutely tell when you leave one's park. When you go into Beach Park and you go into, Zion, well, actually, part of Zion by the high school and Beach Park going all the way to Kenosha to Green Bay. And the Green Bay road is terrible most of the time, even when we have a couple inches of snow. But you can always tell. I, I don't take Sheridan. I don't go that way. I go, I go west and then go south. But absolutely the best job. And I do look down the side streets as I'm heading west. And you guys do an outstanding job.
I'll let you guys know.
Yeah, please do. But I really appreciate that. Like I do get a lot of people when I'm just in the community that actually say the same thing. But I know you've been out more saltine this year than Molly, but still, you guys have done an outstanding job. I want to remind everyone to follow our Facebook at the official village page, Village of West Department. And I'd also like to thank trustee Whitmore. I saw that post on Facebook with George Foster, very nice presentation. I just want to thank you for doing that. I didn't know he was offering that too. But hopefully, every trustee department-wise could sign on with George Foster and talk a little bit about your department.
He would like everybody to reach out, whoever is interested.
So. Okay, that's all I have. I just need a motion for adjournment.
So, second.
Target?
Aye.
Levin? Margot?
Aye.
I have never seen.